The Flugerville work session for, uh, what is today?
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth. May fourteenth at five o'clock. And our first item is our joint session with the PCDC Planning and Zoning Commission. Sorry. And, um, wherever you guys want to start. I have, uh,
Aren't you?
Yeah, Jonathan, do you?
Okay.
I'll, I have a few things after the presentation. We'll provide you all with some additional context and the feedback that the Planning and Zoning Commission had. And hopefully we'll have a quorum by the time.
How many do you need per forum? Four, okay.
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Chair, and Commissioners. My name is Abby Morrison. I'm the Public Works Services Director. We are here tonight to present the five-year capital improvement plan for fiscal years twenty-five through twenty-nine as required by the city charter. No action will be requested tonight on the plan. The plan is approved annually through the budgeting process. This plan was presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission on April first and again on May sixth, where it was unanimously approved. Every year, the Planning and Zoning Commission is required to make a recommendation to the city council for the approval of the plan. While we are here to talk about the five-year capital improvement plan, we're going to focus on twenty-four and twenty-five projects. As we move through this presentation, I think it's important that we walk through the plan. It's updated annually and is non-fiscally constrained, meaning while a project may be identified as a need within the plan, that does not mean we have identified funding yet. As needs change, as needs change, projects progress and master plans get updated, this plan is a living document and is available to update annually to keep up with the city's growth. With that, I will hand it over to Cindy Bro to further go over the planning and general funding information. After that, we'll hand it off to other public works team members who are subject matter experts on the program areas, a smit if you will.
I'm not getting our size if.
We can't.
There we go. Yay. Good evening, everyone. I'm Cindy Bro, the CIP Program Manager. And we're just going to go over a few things tonight to kind of go explain what this plan is for you. The CIP is a non-recurring cost projects plan. It starts about fifty thousand and up on projects. Many of these types of CIP projects range from designed to updating our streets for improved mobility, to improving our storm drains, to expanding our capacity to provide clean drinking water and collecting wastewater. Our capital improvement projects can also include investments to build or rehab buildings such as police stations and recreation facilities. This five-year plan is reviewed, refined, and approved annually with updates to costs to reflect the most current fiscal year. Review of priority and projects and review of the projects should be transformed or changed due to other projects in the same vicinity. There are eight program areas: transportation, parks, facilities, drainage, reclaimed water, wastewater, water, and technology. For FY twenty-five, we do not have any new technology projects that we're going to have this category come up again, I'm sure, in the future as our needs continue to be reviewed annually. By aligning with our Aspire 2040 and the strategic plan, our CIP projects remain diverse and equitable, fiscally responsible, environmentally sustainable, community-oriented, safe and healthy, and provide economic opportunities for all in the area. The five-year CIP plan is refined annually to plan, prioritize, and coordinate our capital improvement projects and focus on meeting today's needs as well as future needs. Projects are based on our comprehensive plans, our master plans that we adopt every three to five years, the infrastructure condition reports, citizen requests for service, and growth and development in our community. Our funding sources for these plans are mostly certificate of obligation bonds, general obligation bonds, those are voter-approved, grants, and we have creative funding through WIFIA, which is the Water Infrastructure Finance and Innovative Act, TERS, Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone, impact fees, CAMPO, which is Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organizations, our utility funds, and the Texas Water Development Board. For this five-year CIP program, we have two-point-two-four billion dollars in a hundred and thirty-two projects.
Cindy, can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
What funds, you gave that list right there. What funding source was not listed?
Oh, there's a lot that aren't listed. And in the book that you'll get at the end, you'll have like a lot of funding sources available to us. These are the most used right now, but that's not to say that those others won't be used at another time.
I'm feeling the three people that watch us on TV, they asked that question, that's why.
Sure.
I'm in the fourth one this weekend.
And that book will be published on ClearGov at such time that everyone can see it.
And the two-point-two billion is over?
Over all five years, all the projects, total project dollars, even some that we are in action right now. For the water, we had five-hundred-and-one million in sixteen projects. Wastewater is five-hundred-and-five million in twenty-four projects. Transportation is seven-hundred-and-twenty-five million in forty-eight projects. Parks, a hundred-and-seventy-five million in twenty-four projects. Facilities, two-hundred-and-sixty-seven million in eight projects. Reclaimed water, fifteen million in two projects, and drainage, forty-five million in ten projects.
Can I ask you on the water, you've got that listed as ten projects now. Is the raw water line from the lake up, that is from Lady Bird Lake?
This.
Is that a single project under this count?
Yes. It's a single project.
One of the ten.
One large project.
Two or three of the ten.
Yes.
Segmented somehow.
Yes.
And what's the cost of that one project?
Um, hold on one second, and I can tell you.
That is roughly a hundred-and-seventy million dollars. A hundred-and-seventy million dollars.
That's a hundred-and-seventy million dollars by itself.
By itself.
So that one project is, I mean, it's a very big deal. And it's about a third of the total water expenditure over ten years, or five years.
So here you'll see on the screen that we do have a two-point-one-billion-dollar capital improvement plan over the next five years. However, you'll hear Jeff and Brandon talk about the big three utility projects. That's the water plant expansion, the new wastewater treatment plant, and the raw water line. If you take those out, we're around one-point-four billion, which is more in line with Georgetown and Round Rock as we continue to grow this area.
Well, also, you need to take consideration and like for some places, you see Cedar Park. Cedar Park's almost built out. And that's, again, for the three people watching. The question we often ask is why are we doing all this growth and above my there? It's because we still have honestly half our community that we're still growing out to.
Correct.
Well, unlike Round Rock or Georgetown, we don't have a large natural lake or river.
Okay. Okay, our general fund are the drainage, facilities, parks, and transportation. That encompasses ninety projects at one-point-two billion. And the funding sources listed for those are here. As you'll see, about half of that is future debt. The other is the certificates of obligation, general obligation bonds, drainage utility funds, ARCA funds, Parks escrow funds, traffic impact analysis funds, and roadway impact fees that are already covered for those projects. So there is, like I said, about half of that that is still remaining out there for future funding. And again, all of that is not for FY twenty-five.
Well, you mentioned this is a non-fiscally constrained plan. This is projected for five years. I imagine we don't actually expect to issue six-hundred-and-thirteen million dollars in debt in the next five years.
Right. Okay, and with that, I'm going to turn this over to Evan Greshaw for their drainage projects.
Yeah, we'll have to play a musical chairs a little bit here.
Thank you.
I am the director of Public Transportation. And the drainage program, as mentioned, consists of ten projects for about forty-five million dollars. They came out of, they were identified out of the drainage master plan. And to give you an idea, one of them is to create regional detention ponds to facilitate redevelopment of downtown. And most of the other projects are to protect homes and roads from flood.
And so the facility program is a big part of the capital program as well. Here's eight projects, and that's City Hall, of course, as you all know. And that's anticipated to start December of this year and be completed by fall of twenty-twenty-six. And we also have the ADA Transition Plan. That project identifies items such as code and safety issues to ensure better public access to city facilities. The Public Work Complex that you all are aware of as well. And that's anticipated to begin November of twenty-twenty-four and be completed by the spring of twenty-twenty-six. We're expecting to come to council in either July or August to recommend a selection for a construction manager at risk at that time. It also includes a citywide master plan. Staff's written the draft scope. I mean, this scope is currently being reviewed by city department directors. And once this review and comment period closes on the twenty-second, staff will then evaluate the comments and make revisions, and then draft a request for proposals, which will then be publicly bid. And facilities condition assessment as well. And staff will be bringing a recommendation forward at the May twenty-eighth council meeting. And this assessment will not only provide input for capital planning, but will also provide maintenance planning and associated cost programming. And justice center expansion. This is needed in order to accommodate the number of staff and ability to have adequate operational space. And that's something that is programmed for later, which we, once, once we have more input on the citywide master plan and facility condition assessment, we can better narrow down needs and costs. And East Police Substation is another one that is in the future that is being evaluated, will be evaluated as part of the citywide master plan, as well as retrofitting this building for expansion. This next slide is just a little bit more on City Hall. I'm just kind of showing a rendering of what it would look like, as well as the public works complex.
Okay, so for the transportation program, there are forty-eight projects, of which thirty-two are already in motion. And so most of them are to expand or create new roadways and to add multimotor facilities to provide better pedestrian and bicycle connectivity, as well as automobile connectivity. And we also are focused on looking at intersections, both for operations and safety. So the next few slides.
Katie, what's a? Can you go back, please? What's a low-speed mode facility? I haven't seen that term before.
Yeah, low-speed mode is kind of a catch-all term for anything that's not like a two-wheeled bike or walking. So scooter, golf cart, when the sit-down's a trike, yeah. Just being inclusive of all the different low-speed modes out there.
So what would that, okay, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So the next few slides, we're going to highlight the projects that are going to substantially start in fiscal year twenty-twenty-five. Parkway Drive is a community development block grant project that we are actively working on the scope with a design engineer, and we'll get that started soon. Lucky Ridge Lane has also been added to the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five. And again, that's to expand the roadway and create multimotor facilities. So one of the significant changes that was made from the current five-year CIP to the one that's proposed for this particular one that you're looking at is to reprioritize the roadway projects that are parallel to FM six-eighty-five to provide traffic relief to FM six-eighty-five. And those are the Finneg Lane Extensions, Old Austin Hutto Road, and Tarrel Lane. And we have those highlighted here. So Tarrel Lane will be somewhere from Town Center Drive, go parallel to FM six-eighty-five. And depending on alignment study, somewhere on Fluger Farm Lane, or maybe connect to East Flugerville Parkway, but that'll be part of a transportation plan review. Old Austin Hutto Road Extension is to extend it, again, parallel to FM six-eighty-five. And then the two Finneg Lane Extensions, which is basically to complete that roadway. So between Wells Branch Parkway and Pecan Street, and going from the terminus of just north of Pecan to FM six-eighty-five.
And what's the rationale for moving those from twenty-eight, twenty-nine to twenty-five?
Great question. So in the current five-year CIP plan, we have it that improvements to FM six-eighty-five would happen before these roadways. But when you think of basically, if we have FM six-eighty-five under construction, we need to provide an alternate route for people, so that's one reason. The second reason is we may be able to postpone or change the scope of the FM six-eighty-five improvements if we find that these parallel routes can provide the relief needed for FM six-eighty-five.
Okay.
Can you? Can you tell me a little more about that? And what I'm asking specifically, I've been reading, we've got the Town Center Drive extension in here. And the Town Center Drive extension, I'm trying to visualize, I'm not seeing anywhere that Town Center Drive can actually be extended. I don't know if it may be, may be expanded, or how that works.
Yes, that, it's actually, I'm, that seems to be kind of a legacy name for that project. So it's more like Stone Hill Town Center. The extension is actually to the north, where Limestone Commercial is curving up to the north of Stone Hill Town Center. And so you can see it on the map there. It's that very top east-west yellow dashed roadway. So that would connect Limestone Commercial to, eventually extend that out to Fluger Farm via Abbey Glen Castle. So Fluger Farm North is going to continue on to State Highway forty-five frontage, and then that connector.
Right, and I'm sorry, that's, is that Limestone Commercial there? Or, because it's, it's not Town, is it? It's not Town Center Drive?
No, it's not Town Center, it's Town Center, yeah, it's.
We might want to rename that one.
Yes, I agree. We, it, Limestone Commercial does something interesting where it curves, and then it continues on like a sharp right to go to State Highway forty-five. So we'll need to figure out the naming for that section, yeah.
Okay. Now, we've got some interesting public streets up there.
Yeah.
Interesting's the way to put it. Okay. I just, the only thing is that, and my face kind of, because whenever we talked about like, if in fact we find that the, the traffic relief that we need is done with the, the other aspects parallel roads that are to six-eighty-five, we may not need to implement six-eighty-five to the extent. I just have a little concern about that because I know that it was a big deal for this council to decide one way or the other what six-eighty-five is going to be. And I do not see in the future, foreseeable future of the city, that six-eighty-five is going to have less traffic, even if it's for the onus at that time period, than have more as it continues to grow with that, particularly with what's happening with growing down to south side of town, so. I get the spirit for that, absolutely. I just have a little apprehension about saying, well, we may not want to implement parts of our project. Because if we found anything in the city, is that, it's not that we're building streets too quickly or too much. It's that honestly, we don't have enough capacity for people, so.
I think some of the, a couple of the comments from, from Planning and Zoning Commission as well when we were reviewing drafts was related to that as well, because, you know, knowing that the larger project for six-eighty-five is, you know, five to eight years out for full completion, right? I think that is definitely an important thing to consider, given that it's going to be a long time before we get that, that full relief. And to your point, the growth in the meantime is certainly going to only expand. And so I think anything we can do to try to accelerate some of these projects, we certainly pushed on that in a few different ways during our reviews of the transportation plan in particular.
So I, I am curious, have we considered the concept of perpendicular paths as relief for six-eighty-five? I would imagine the most relief for six-eighty-five is not going to be Fennig. It's not going to be the little road behind Walgreens. It, it's going to be one-thirty. And, you know, if we just send traffic down one-thirty, can it get back across town? And it'll get in the cross-town at Pecan and six-eighty-five is a little difficult. Did, did we consider that in terms of relief for, for the six-eighty-five project?
Yeah, so what we're doing right now, so I would say the initial FM six-eighty-five corridor study that was done was more of a broad bash, broad brush modeling. And this one's a much more refined modeling that we're doing. And one of the issues that came up is people aren't necessarily trying to avoid FM six-eighty-five because there are demand generators there. People want to go to that corridor, and there is more development coming up there. So it's in anticipation of that growth along the corridor. So it's not just the traffic that's just trying to get from point A and point B that's beyond that corridor.
So it's, it's relief plus connectivity.
Yes, exactly, yeah. And preparation for construction on FM six-eighty-five as well.
Economic development.
And just wanted to back up one second, just to kind of provide some context. I know they'll said the roads and, uh, public roads in Stone Hill are interesting. And they are.
The fact that they're public roads.
I might, I might say that perhaps, from context, we could consider those roads innovative in that that area has become the largest sales tax generate area in our city. And, you know, but for those public roads, that development may not have come into existence. So it's, it's easy twenty years later to point fingers at, oh, we've got interesting public roads there. But I, I think it's important to think about the context.
And so Katie, the, the line that goes up to Flugerville Parkway is that, I'm assuming that's on the east side of the electrical grid system that's on Flugerville Parkway?
Uh, yeah, that substation you're talking about? Yeah, yeah, we would look at alignment not to have to move that.
It looks like it's midpoint somewhere.
Yeah, this is very much a GIS map, so, yeah.
Anything else?
Parks, would like him and speak about the Parks Program.
The Parks Program?
Yes.
Shane's been trying to get up here about four or five times already, so. He's done with us.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Chair and Commissioners. I want to introduce Jeff. Jeff Ashay is our new Assistant Director. You can see I failed in getting him a name tag. That was not Tryst's fault. That's me.
Okay.
Uh, we want to go over the Parks CIP projects as well. We have twenty-four projects, eighteen that we're working on this next year. None of them will be a surprise to you. Nine are bond, nine are, uh, non-bond CIP.
I heard a question mark at the end of that.
Did I do something wrong?
Probably not.
It was. Actually.
Trying to reconnect down there.
Just like I said, she said probably not.
A pop quiz for Jeff. We just saw a park, can we go back one slide there? Uh, and it's got, it's got shade cover. What percentage of parks in Flugerville are currently covered by shade cover?
Oh, gosh, we've talked about this so often.
You're going to be in so much trouble.
We're ninety-four percent?
Ninety-seven percent.
We're about to be ninety-seven percent at the end of this year, yes.
Ninety-seven percent at the end of this year.
I knew that number, but the current number.
And Shane, since you.
You brought him up to speed, now hurry, Shane, get up.
Since you said it last time, can you say how mu, when you came here, how many parks were actually have shade on?
Yeah, sixty percent had shade. We're hoping by the end of the year, this isn't CIP, but we love to brag. Eighty, over eighty percent of our population are within a ten-minute walk to a park. Over ninety percent are within a five-minute walk to a trail. The average age of our playground by the end of this year will be five or under. And the, we're hoping to a hundred percent have shade. We're gonna, we're working really hard on Central Park. So we'll be, the only place we know of that we've found that have eighty percent of our population or more within a ten-minute walk, five, ninety, ninety percent or more within a five-minute walk to a trail. And then average age for our playground, five or less, and a hundred percent of our shade.
We're, we're out parking Austin and Round Rock.
Anyone you think of.
We're the parks capital of the world.
That's right. That's right.
It's why I bought my house in Fluggerville.
All right. And then I'm sure you're quite familiar with the, the nine non-bond, the CIP improvements. A lot of them come from our master plan. Whether it's some aquatic improvements, the athletic field feasibility study where we're trying to see where our community is growing and how to best serve them the next 10 years for athletic fields. The Historic Water Tower Park, the West Point Park improvements, we're working on our second half of that improvement this summer, the bridge location relocation. And then just our trail connections, ADA and sidewalks. And that, unless you have any questions, here's short and sweet. Goats or low mode transportation?
Oh, yeah. Everybody loves the goats right now.
Can we go back one slide here?
Yes, sir.
I get more pictures of goats than vegetation.
So 1849 Park Edition, I don't see any new soccer fields there.
No, there's no, there are no soccer fields on Phase Two.
Just, just baseball fields.
Just baseball, softball.
Softball, softball. And parking.
And parking.
You recognize that Councilman Ruiz will be here after Councilman Mataro.
That's right. Yeah.
And lights on the football field.
Lights on the football field. That's Phase One B. I think that's what we're calling it. And we'll, we'll be bringing something y'all soon where we're talking about some more improvements that you could see. A couple more fields, maybe a Miracle League field and some, maybe some pickleball on that Phase Two as well.
And what Rudy didn't say is that the lights on the football field should be LED color change programmable from his phone.
We'll be able to do some of those. I don't know if we'll be able to do all of them.
What's the, what's the timeline on these baseball and soccer fields?
So we're going to be going out to bid for that portion right there in the next couple of weeks.
Yeah, they're breaking around by the end of the year.
Yes. And so the, the timeline for construction is a year, but we're hoping to figure out some ways to
So operational by next summer?
Careful.
Be careful. You'll remember.
End of summer.
You remember how much shade we had.
Gilliland Park slipping here.
That will have like four months of continuous rain.
Yeah, and this summer is our goal.
We would, we would love to have fall ball in 2025.
Okay. So let me, let me ask this. I'll dispense with the softball questions and ask you the. When it comes to all these capital improvement projects, I'm, I'm really excited to be, see the softball and the, and the baseball fields. But that brings with it programming. It brings with it operations. Do you have an idea of what the, the operations, how much the operations budget is going to have to grow to support these capital projects?
Yeah, Jeff's been working on that in the budget process now. We do. Yeah. So I think we were looking at for that phase in particular, gosh, we were just talking about a lot of different numbers. But I believe that that's going to be probably with the contracts, because obviously baseball and softball fields require a lot more upkeep and maintenance than regular soccer fields, football field. There's daily things you have to do to those infields.
I beg to differ.
So I think we're looking at about 500,000 for the contract per year, per year. That's, that's going to maintain these facilities.
All right. Are we expecting any of that in cost recovery from the programming fees?
Oh, yes.
We certainly, we certainly are. Yes.
Do we have a target on, on how much that's going to be?
We.
Percentage wise?
So, yeah, around 300,000. So three fields kind of presents, obviously, we're going to have some things that we'll talk to council about later on. But three fields is probably under what we would, what a lot of tournaments are going to be looking for. And so we're going to have to probably get some specialized tournaments, maybe work with some other cities. But we are hoping for some some out of town use of those facilities as well as the rentals for local, you know, Little League and things like that.
My, my hope would be is this, this to the mayor pretend's point is that we know just how much money these select soccer tournaments and these travel halls take in and do particularly since it's here around market over there. We have the ability because we're, hops get jumped from NIM, Northeast Metro Park. And there, I have made it known that they probably need to up their, their game, given what we're doing over here. Since they want some more synergy on these things, to have tournaments that would just be co-located here from that. Because that's what we've done with soccer. That's what we hope to do with football and other aspects to make that happen. There, I mean, years ago, someone came to Shane, I can't remember who it was, we were talking about, you know, trying to, trying to get this because they knew how much money these select baseball came in here. We just didn't have the facilities and we weren't at that point for Phase Two yet. If we're able to get this done within a year or something like that, I mean, just like how we're actually operating the block, which makes no, you gotta remember where we came from, y'all. I mean, this is impressive for us to be operating the black, you know, with these fields because we were in the red six ways from Sunday over here. I, I have the complete anticipation, the same thing's going to happen from there because people will realize the facility, just like they've done with 1849 Park. And they're going to want to pay and use them more.
So you're anticipating about a 60% cost recovery on these fields?
Off those fields right now, we have about a half a million dollar cost. We were, we were anticipating a $300,000 revenue. And we're, we're hoping to bring two more fields and like I said, a miracle field, which could also work as a T-ball field and some pickleball courts on a property that's near here within the park, in the park
Boundary.
Boundary, that we think we could, we're going to come back to y'all and ask for support to do something like that during the same time. And we think with that, we can, we can get even closer to that cost recovery number with some of the pickleball.
Are we still amongst the least expensive in the area as far as rentals?
Yeah, we, we're right there. We, we've, we've updated costs a little bit, but we're, we're still.
Half, middle half. Yeah.
It is important to remember on this, this Phase Two, there also is that lawn space that's going to provide some rental opportunities and things as well. So it's not just the three fields. We've got event opportunities out of Phase Two as well.
Okay. How many people actually take advantage of our kitchen out there?
At the football fields?
Yeah.
Right now it's tough because if you were a football team and you want to do something in the fall, you really don't have a lot of lights out there. So it's pretty rare.
Yeah. Can, can we do something to incentivize? Because, you know, even though it's on the other side from the soccer fields, that happens all the time in tournaments. You're just, you just walk to that facility. And maybe we can do something where we can incentivize them to start utilizing that, have it as an option, maybe the base rate and see what we can work on that as well. It's, I mean, that was, gosh, what is his name? I can't remember on council, we've asked for it. Over a decade ago, I can't remember his name. Yeah, it was over a decade ago.
Was that Wayne?
Wayne, Wayne did. Industrial side, an industrial sized kitchen. And that's what we have, an industrial sized kitchen.
On the football side.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's just sitting there.
And what's the cost recovery we're getting on the soccer fields out there currently?
Well, our master plan showed that we were, we were right at cost recovery on our soccer fields.
100%.
Yeah, it was, it was really close.
95%.
Something like that. Yes, sir.
Which is insane.
That's very, very high.
Doesn't just happen.
Okay. I'm impressed.
Awesome. Thank y'all.
I think I just wanted to mention one other thing, if you don't mind, about the parks plan. I, I think it's really important also to recognize that there is a built-in plan here to improve from an equity perspective. Our ADA paved and unpaved trails as well as continued investment in the trail system overall, which as we know is one of the, one of the greatest things and, and huge detractors for our residents. And in fact, one of the things that we discussed in our review was that the forward-looking projections for those investments are actually flat funded currently. And we're probably going to get less and less every year trails for those dollars. And so I think there's opportunity to look at, at minimum, what an inflation adjusted spend looks at to make sure that we continue to invest in our ADA support as well as our traditional trail system as well.
Jonathan, that's a really good point because if you guys watched Kex and we were mentioned recently because Travis County revamped their, their map of the trails over here with that, a discussion about, well, we need to look at what we're doing with our trails as well. And they're aligning their trail system to where in fact, you're going to be able to take a trail at some point in the future from Fluggerville all the way down to San Antonio.
We have, to, to speak to Jonathan's point, we have about a million dollars a year in either right-of-way acquisition, unpaved and paved ADA transition plan funding and then trail connection. And we have about $350,000 a year in our general fund to help us with just trail repair and maintenance as well. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Oh, Lord, the boring water people.
They don't, they don't ever spend any money.
Yeah.
We're here for what I've been waiting on this whole time. Waste water, waste water park.
A waste water.
Waste water. What is here for?
That's where the real money comes from.
Maybe not so much.
What's your cost recovery on that?
So good evening, Mayor and Council, Commissioners. Thank you for having us up here. So I'm Brandon Pritchett, Utility Director for the city, and I'm joined by original Jeff, Jeff Dunsworth with the city as well. So talk to you a little bit about the water and wastewater CIP. So as Abby and Cindy mentioned, as far as funding, funding and how we fund our projects, a big part of how we're funding our water and wastewater infrastructure projects is both through the Texas Water Development Board, Texas Water Development Board and through the WIFIA program, which is funded through the EPA. So the benefit to that, as you've heard us talk about numerous times before, is we save millions of dollars on the cost of loans on all of our projects. Especially when we're looking at these large capital investments that we're doing for water and wastewater. So that's why when you look at it, you see the WIFIA funding and the Texas Water Development Board funding, we're aggressively pursuing those so that way we can continue to drive down how much we're actually paying on that debt we're issuing.
Is WIFIA funding both water and wastewater or?
Water and wastewater. It can be used for drainage or flood, flood as well. There's a whole plethora of things can be used for, for water, water, water wastewater or drainage.
That's saving us about a percent on that?
A, a certain percent. It, it's based on the market rate of it. But the benefit of WIFIA too is that it's not, so with Texas Water Development Board, when you go out and you secure the loan, you close on the loan, you issue revenue bonds, which then you're paying the interest on as soon as you close on that loan. Whereas WIFIA works as a drawdown loan, so they commit to a certain dollar amount, whatever you're looking for. And you draw that down and you're not actually paying the interest until you draw the money down. So it's incredibly beneficial and we're great partner, we're great partners to work with for all of our projects. So to, to start off with, we'll talk a little bit about reclaimed water. So reclaimed water, so I believe you all know it's all purple pipe. So we have two projects that we talked about previously when we went through the master plan. There's the one that we're currently in design for, for the 1849 Park. And then we also have a second one that will travel up the Weiss corridor as well. So the benefit for purple pipe overall for a capital improvement plan is, A, it allows us to diversify where our water source is. It minimizes how much potable water we actually have to use for irrigation need. And it also means that it's less reliance on lower Colorado River authority and our groundwater supplies. So again, the reclaimed water project along Weissland is a, a, the high point, high project in the FY25 CIP. So this again goes all the way up the Weissland corridor to really hit the, the high school, the Weiss, Weiss High School. There's HOAs along that cor- that corridor that currently irrigate with potable water that we want to be able to really hone in on and be able to minimize their need on potable water irrigation needs.
Cause that, so is there any sort of special engineering on that? Because it's, as I understand, water systems are circular, right? And this one like deadheads. So is that more difficult, less difficult? You just put a bunch of concrete at the end of it?
There's a, there's a design for thrust blocks. Even water systems have dead ends the same way. So they don't all loop the way that, you know, it would be perfect world. But you put what's called a thrust block, which is a concrete, essentially a concrete block at the end of it. That prevents it from blowing out a MJ at the end of it, which is a big mess.
Yeah.
So the only design difference on these is usually at the end of a line like that, you put in an auto, either an automatic flusher or you have a flushing program for a dead end line like that. But it's ran very similarly to how a potable water system is ran and operated, just with, there's just different rules with signage and that kind of thing.
Thank you.
Could you remind me on the, on the reclaimed water, the funding source on that? That's going to, there, there's not a cost recovery model in that one. That one's not something that's going on people's water bills. It's I, I assume we'll be charging rates for usage, but we're our main customer on that one.
Correct. So the, well, this is a, this is a long answer. I'll do my best to be as like quick as possible. So for the funding for reclaimed, we can actually qualify for Bureau of Reclamation grants, up to 25% of the project. Grant being, you know, free money instead of which we're pursuing that very aggressively as well. So, but the, the benefit to reclaimed water is, yes, we are, we charge a lower rate than potable water for irrigation needs. There will be a rate. We're currently working on the rate study for that to bring forward to y'all for consideration. And the, the benefit to that though is that it delays out our capital costs on our potable water system, right? So you, you, we may operate at a loss for the first few years, but the intent is to, instead of building a new water plant expansion in 2040, I can go to 2050 or 2045, depending on how far you expand that out. So because we can minimize how big that peak demand is on our potable water system.
Right. I guess I'm, I'm trying to work on the mechanics of that. When you say, you know, we may be operating at a loss for, for a while, is that going to be reflected in our general fund? Or is that going to be the Parks Department paying for the water to, to water 1849 and it's just internal transfers or?
So there's.
Is it on the utility fund?
There's some, the watering costs is part of it. Most of it's on the utility fund for the debt piece until we actually get the non-city customers that connected to it. So part of our whole scope with this as well is to bring it over and forward to y'all through where, once we have the lines out, people within a certain distance are required to connect to it. And then the benefit too, for those customers is also that it's lower volumetric costing.
Yeah, if I could jump in real quick, now that we have a quorum of the Planning and Zone Commission, I want to open up our special session with you all here at 5:40 PM. Thank you.
Sorry. Sorry about that.
Real quick, you just had me thinking about, based on our current timeline, when we, when we will have to again to expand capacity?
So that's a bit of a, just putting out there, it's a bit of a crystal ball, right? I'm not a demographer, they can tell you growth. But the, the intent for like the water treatment plan is to be able to serve until 2040. So again, I'm not the, the, and I'll be all of what growth's going to happen until then.
He said it before. Nobody could have expected for the growth we have, you know, to where it is. I'm just trying to think to myself when again, so the citizens need to be prepared. So we're saying 16 years.
Correct. But the intent with purple pipe is to be able to say, can I make it 20?
Yeah.
Right.
And I just, you know, hope for the best, prepare for the worst. And so, you know, just thinking to myself, okay, this doing this right now and then given how permitting is, I mean, I, I honestly do think laws will change in between regarding what we're able to do and the ability to access capacity in other aspects during that time period. But I think 16 years is like, I think that's a fair and a good time for like to get people where doing their best.
So, so when we talk about wastewater, so wastewater is a fun topic. So one of our big three projects that Abby and Cindy mentioned earlier.
Say it fine.
Yes.
I'm sorry, but I, did I, I, there was a P implied P in front of that.
You don't remember cleaning out that lift pump?
So the.
Rudy, Rudy got fun all over his face the other day.
So one of the, the big three wastewater projects we have, which is the Willbarger wastewater treatment plant project, which we will be bringing forward the final GMP to y'all in June. We're, we're really intending to expand the city's treatment capacity. So we have a a large amount of lift stations currently out in the wastewater system that we're trying to decommission. So and be more intelligent about how and if we have to put in lift stations, which we'll talk about in the next slide. So but the, we want to make sure we maintain it and maintain wastewater infrastructure and plan for the next 20 years of growth as well. So FY25 wastewater projects, while y'all have all heard me talk about how much I hate lift stations, we are being very strategic on how we do these. So previously, we have just a landmine system of land, lift stations all over the place. We have two projects now to be able to have one single point, which is the middle project of that new Sweden lift station. So we have a massive wastewater CCN, as you're all very well aware. But we have the interceptor on the north side of the wastewater CCN and then that will eventually connect down to the new Sweden lift station all the way along 973 and New Sweden Church Road.
When are you going to start de, decontaminating?
Decommissioning?
Decommissioning, yeah. Have that in my head, yeah.
So add as part of the Willbarger, so the Willbarger program as a whole is the wastewater treatment plant. There's an interceptor that goes with it and there's a second interceptor that goes in. So with Willbarger breaking ground, the interceptor comes in right behind it. So we will be looking at the 2026 timeframe of taking a progressive.
One by one.
One by one, moving our way up. But it's 2026, 2027, the large amount of them, which are kind of in that Kelly Lane-ish corridor are all going to be going offline and going into a gravity system.
Brandon, to your point regarding lift stations, can you talk more about the technology? As a technology, now us going out by Carmel and seeing firsthand are like, oh, wow. Okay, this is why we will make sure we want to have expanded treatment plants and plus lift stations. You know, has anything improved that makes you feel more comfortable at least with, you know, implementation of these things?
So I think for lift stations, there's ways in which you can, so we'll talk about how we're kind of designing these with, with like polymer concrete wet wells, which means that the gases don't corrode the concrete, which means the coating systems don't, you don't have a coating system the same way. So it gives you a lot more piece of. don't have a coating system the same way, so it gives you a lot more peace of mind on the actual concrete that's being constructed. Uh, they make things that are more cutter, they're called cutter blades because people, people flush what they shouldn't flush, uh, that are more intended to actually cut those things through instead of them getting stuck in the pump, which are more, becoming more and more common as well. So it gives us more peace of mind, um, but it's still a risk. It's always still a risk because nothing, nothing like that is still foolproof. Um, so no matter how we can design them, there's always gonna be a failure point that's.
This is a reminder for public, for all that's good and holy, please do not flush your wet wipes and other things down there, we've seen what that looks like firsthand. Don't do it.
It's not, it's unpleasant, um, a little unpleasant. Uh, so, moving on to the, so to the waters.
So many jokes to tell, oh, right there, God.
So, for the water side of the house, uh, so as y'all know, we have one water treatment plant expansion that's currently undergoing, so if you drive up Weiss Lane, you'll see all the construction going on there. Uh, that is still on schedule to be, to be done in March of 2026. Um, and then we also have, uh, the, uh, raw water, raw water line that we, uh, Mr. Rogers spoke about earlier, which is the 15 mile pipeline that is, is expected to bid out this fall. So those are the two huge capital projects that we're currently working on to really move forward.
So you mentioned, uh, you expect to bid that out this fall, what's our timeline in terms of breaking ground and, and actually having that pipe operational?
Eighteen months?
Well, that's the, 18 months is the contract period, but we're looking at a, uh, large quantity of pipe that's going to have to be ordered, manufactured and delivered. So there'll be clearing operations that will start early, early on, but as far as trenching, excavation and putting in pipe, that may be, be delayed for four to six months until the contractor actually takes delivery of the, uh, the large order pipes.
So we're looking at the end of 2026?
That's, that's a strategic, strategic timeline, provided that we don't get that four or five months of rain every year.
But if we need, if we do get four or five months of rain, then we have less need for actually pumping water out of the river.
Did our water guy from Seattle bring all that rain with him? What's going on with that?
So I, I think I'm gonna go to the next slide, possibly, maybe? Sorry, Trista. Uh, so some, uh, projects for FY25 that we have kind of slated to move forward. Uh, so we have a 12 inch looping improvement along the Cameron Lane corridor, so if you're aware of Cameron Lane and where, uh, Weiss goes all the way, Weiss Lane where it starts, and then all the way out to what will be the future Melver Lane. Uh, so we serve those customers, uh, or we, they're all new water with CCN customers as well, so we need to be able to serve them. And we have a rehab, a lot of rehab projects over the next two, three years of existing infrastructure, uh, 40, 50-year-old infrastructure that we have, and Bowles, Gatlinburg, and then we have ground storage tanks that we need to make sure that, we have to make sure that we're maintaining these as well while we're still building new infrastructure.
And I assume that the 12-inch loop is based on future projections of LUEs or whatever unit of measurement there's gonna be out there?
Yes.
That there may be more than just single family, that it may be some commercial, maybe some multifamily?
Yep.
All that was taken into account.
Yes, so those are planned based upon the Aspire 2040 and what those zones are zoned for.
Yes, sir.
Um, so we plan around that, that plan, uh, we, we plan around the big plan, um, so, uh, but we also know that there's developments along that corridor that have come forward to council for what they're gonna be developing as well, um, so we know that they're kind of at the, at the door, so to speak, ready to, ready to develop.
And, and I guess the important thing for those of us, uh, sitting up here to remember is that capacity is planned for those projections, and so that when we, when we have an opportunity to, to, uh, entertain, uh, changes, uh, from developers that are coming in, uh, we have to understand that, that there could be an impact on the infrastructure that we put in five, 10 years ago, based on future projections, and we have to be ready to mitigate that.
Yes, sir. And when a new development comes in, they're required to, of course, make sure that they can either meet, the existing infrastructure meets their needs, or that they have to upsize it accordingly.
Thank you.
Could, could you give me an idea on the Gatlinburg and Bolt Place rehab? How many connections does that do?
Ooh, that's a really good question, I don't have off the top of my head, but I'm happy to send to you. Um, they're fairly, they're legacy neighborhoods, they're fairly lit, I mean, they're intensive as far as single-family homes.
Yeah.
I don't have the connection count off the top of my head, but the rehab itself is a pipe bursting or open cut, uh, replacement.
Right, and, and the reason I ask is I know, uh, last year, the CIP informs our rate study, and our rate study affects how much our, our citizens have to pay for water and wastewater and all that good stuff. Uh, and even last year, I think we postponed the adoption of the rate study because we were concerned about the, uh, the high rate of increase, and then it, hey, can you sharpen your pencils, find us some savings, and, uh, we, we weren't able to, and so we, we raised it, and then I know we had, um, you know, a project that was, uh, a rehabilitation that, uh, it seemed like it, uh, affected a, a very small number of connections at a very high price. So I'm trying to understand if there's anything in our CIP here, or if there's a way we can analyze it to make sure that we're recognizing the, that the projects that provide as much value as we can, uh, and the projects that we may need to, um, evaluate alternative funding mechanisms for.
I understand, but I'm just, the, just for reference, the reason those were identified for rehabilitation is the fact that they have.
They're, they're ready for it.
They have asbestos cement piping, uh, so anytime we dig that up, someone's in a full respiratory suit, but we're happy to.
Wait, 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 say that again?
Uh, so they have their asbestos cement pipe, which is a very common 80, 1980's pipe material.
I mean, it's literally 40, 50 years old is what we're looking at.
Yeah, yes, um, and so, but when we go to rehab it, it's a, or we go to have a break, we, it's a very labor-intensive process, that's why, and so every time we do it, it's a very significant.
Well, and, and obviously, uh, as we, as we go in and replace all that, you know, we have to take the same precautions, uh, hopefully then we, we only do it once.
No, so what we do with that is you do a, what's called pipe bursting? So you have, you run a pipe through it and it actually bursts the pipe out, so you essentially have a case pipe where it stays in the ground, and you don't actually pull it out.
You don't have to, you don't have to pull it out.
That's right.
But then, when you go into, when you have a break and you have to go in and dig it up, you've still got that old pipe in there, you do not have to be in full suit then as well?
Cause you're not tearing up, so it's when you, it's not vaporized, but when you make it an aerosol where you breathe, it's the dust of the asbestos, so it's already been broken up, you're not breaking it up anymore when you go to repair one that's been pipe bursted.
You're just leaving it in the ground.
Or you're disposing of it accordingly.
And then I think from definitely from an equity standpoint, yeah, we gotta, some of these things are old, um, but they're, just like you said, they're legacy. These are some of the families that, the reason why we're here in the first place, why this place got built out, so, at least the wish we can do though.
I have new videos to Google, pipe bursting, that's, that's cool, I've never heard of it, that's really cool.
And so, with that, uh, so we're, we're bringing the entire CIP to y'all, uh, as Abby and Cindy mentioned earlier, uh, this is, uh, presented annually, we ask for, uh, to, we'll send it in with the, with the budget as well, it's part of the budget process, um, but we're mainly presenting it to you for feedback, if you had any, we, we did bring it to the Planning and Zoning Commission as well. As Abby mentioned, we brought it back to them a second time to address some changes they would like, wanted to see, and we made those changes, and it was approved unanimously at the last council meeting, or at the last commissioners meeting. Uh, but with that, we'll happily be here to answer any questions for any of us.
Yeah, I think just a couple of things if you don't mind, so I, I did want to bring up on the water and wastewater, cause that, as you all are probably more aware than anybody else, those are, are huge, like, generational level investments right now to both get us caught up, especially, uh, Rudy, around the, the older neighborhoods and make sure that we're being equitable, as well as building for the future. One of the things that the Planning and Zoning Commission asked for in this, uh, year's plan, that all of the departments really rallied around, was these, um, sort of portfolio view graphs and things that you'll see in the plan, that I think really helps to paint that picture of where this money is intended to go. And especially, I think, for water and wastewater, you know, you'll see, and you all brought this up, right? Almost 60% of the funding for wastewater are these like, non-traditional, like, not bond money, right? It's the low-interest loans, it's the grants that, uh, the city is pursuing. So 60% of our programs being funded sort of alternatively, or in ways that save taxpayer money, I think is really important to see, and it's one of the things we were happy to see as they broke out those sources, I think in the past. It's mostly been a listing, the listings of all the different acronyms can be tough, right? Um, and on the water side, I think it's close to 50% are those same, same sources, so I think that was a really big deal. Um, going back again to, uh, the purple pipe, uh, conversation, there are several commissioners that have spoken several times, both in the, uh, strategic plan, uh, phase for that, as well as in the capital improvement plan phase of that, a feeling that it was really important to ensure that, uh, that, the first part of that second phase of the, that would include the ability to get some commercial connections, was really important to make sure that we do that, uh, so that we're not the sole customer for a period of time. Um, and so I think that was one where several commissioners have spoken about how, um, happy we were see, to see those projects go together, right? So not only are we serving 1849, but we're also doing the, the stub outs for, um, for getting some of those HOAs and other high use, uh, users over on the east side connected. I think those are both good. The other thing I wanted to say, just in general on the plan, uh, you know, can't thank staff enough for all of the incredible work in here, um, that, it's clearly a ton of thought out work. Uh, we, uh, spent a pretty good amount of time grilling them on some specific projects, as well as some of the high-level, uh, numbers and estimates and things like that. Um, one of the other big things that I really wanted, I'm sure it was a, a, a good amount of work that we had asked for in our initial review, was for them to do that mapping between the strategic pillars of the city of Flugerville. Um, so you can see every single project, is this an equity thing, is this a public safety thing, is this a resilience thing? Uh, and I just felt that really strongly that it was important to make sure that, in addition to looking at the return and the outcomes from all of these projects, that it also is clearly mapped and that we can communicate really effectively around, um, why these projects are important, um, on an individual project level, as well as that. So you'll see the little icons on all the projects, um, uh, that I think do a really nice job of calling out what those, uh, what those mappings are to the strategic pillars. So with that, we did, um, uh, vote as the Planning and Zoning Commissioner last, uh, commission last week, um, it was unanimous to recommend that you all approve this when it comes up in your all's agenda.
Unanimously, right?
Okay, so I wasn't there, but I do agree with him most of the time.
It's true, she was absent during that vote.
Very good, thank you very much, Jonathan, appreciate it. Is that it?
How does, I couldn't hit the button for the next slide, but yes, sir, unless y'all have any questions for us, but if you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Any other questions, Council? I think you guys have answered it, doing a great job, by the way, appreciate it. And Planning and Zoning Commissioners, we appreciate all the time and effort and intensity into these CIP programs, because they're very important long-term, believe they are. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you for coming.
Again, I want to echo Jonathan's kudos to the staff, um, the, the, the way they're able to walk us through areas in which they are experts and we are not, while I wasn't able to vote with the rest of the commission, I would have, Rudy, I was at the prior meeting, I have read the report, it is fantastic, um, you guys have an amazing staff supporting your work.
You're a meticulous person, you know, you are.
All right, thank you. Jonathan, if you want to close your meeting?
Sure, yep, so I will, uh, adjourn the Planning and Zoning joint meeting here at 5:59 PM. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you very much for being here, I appreciate it. Uh, we will be moving on to item 2B, executive session, consultation with legal counsel pursuant to section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code for discussion regarding Gilliland Creek Pool, uh, we are in executive session. of the Texas Government Code for discussion regarding Gilliland Creek Pool. We are in executive session.
Okay, we're back from executive session. No action was taken. Having no further business on the agenda, we are adjourned.
Man for Tim. What is going on?
I'm working.